Next item on the agenda.
Next item is the election of the president of the Lynn City Council.
This is a voice vote, call out a name.
Uh, Council Biden.
Council Falen.
Falen. Council Cahill.
Yeah Cahill.
Cahill. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci, failing. Council Creighton.
Yeah Cahill.
Cahill. Council Seer. Failing. Council Ford.
Failing.
Failing. Council Lozey.
Failing.
Failing. Council Neff.
Ben.
Failing. Council Falen.
Falen.
Failing. Council Trahan.
Your Timothy Falen.
Failing. Council Falen.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank the city council for once again electing me council president. My intention to try to work with everybody, put all political agendas aside and do what's best for the city. Make sure we have open communication. Uh, I enjoy this position. I don't take it for granted and humbled by your support. So, thank you.
Next item is the election of the vice president.
This is also a voice vote.
Council Biden.
Council Ford.
Ford. Council Cahill.
Richard Ford.
Ford. Council Capano. Absent. Council Calucci.
Ford.
Ford. Council Creighton.
Rick Ford.
Ford. Council Seer.
Ford.
Ford. Council Ford.
Ford.
Ford. Council Lozey.
Richard Ford.
Ford. Council Neff.
Ford.
Ford. Council Falen.
Ford.
Ford. Council Trahan.
Rick Ford.
Ford. Council Ford is it?
I am going to speak. I just want to thank all you guys. It doesn't come with any extra money or anything, but I'm truly honored to be the vice president. Sometimes issues come up like the bond and I try to be the middleman and work within the council. I love all you guys and you couldn't ask for a lot of better councils. Thank you.
I have no communications. I have public hearings.
Public hearings.
First public hearing is petition to Tony Tipico Incorporated, Osvaldo Salic and Salsito. Petition for permission for food establishment at We Eat In and Take Out with approximately 20 seats from 9:00 to 11:00 Monday through Sunday of 268-272 Essex Street.
Like to open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Council Trahan.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I didn't have a chance. I tried to reach him. I don't know if he's here. Osvaldo? I've been in the building before and I, you know, I know what it, what it looks like and everything. Uh, I was just, I had a couple of questions. Um, like where are you going to, um, put the, uh, like the dumpster?
Well, we haven't decided yet, but it's due to, it's somewhere.
Okay, yeah, because that's just something we have to have contained. It's going to be, it's going to be done every week, so that's a part of the, uh, stipulations into it. And also, um, the only other problem I had was that on Sunday nights, I might have closed like an hour earlier from, um, instead of 11:00. The elephant house across the street, so. My two stipulations. And when that, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve of the stipulations. Did you get the stipulations yet? Uh, Councilor Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. Salsito. This is your opportunity to get your first commercial since you're on television. What kind of cuisine will you be serving?
To make a movie.
And how delicious will it be?
Best.
You do takeout?
Yes.
All right. Well, there you go.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci. Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. Next petition is petition to National Grid, Jason Dwyer, permission to install two two-inch PVC conduit approximately six feet, six feet from hole seventeen to one forty-nine Mariana Street for new underground service for house located at one forty-nine Mariana.
Like to open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. The Councilman is Mike Ordimer. I work at National Grid Electric at one seventy Memphis Street, Oregon. The company has petitioned for the new house at one eight hundred one forty-nine Mariana Street for the conduit to run from hole seventeen onto the property to the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Council Seer.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. Next petition is petition to Kiara, Mexico, Linda. J. Manuel Servantes for permission for a restaurant with beer and wine at sixteen Martin Street.
Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, through you to the members of the council, Attorney General Italian, here. This evening, I'll let Escondoa, who's the intended and proposed manager. This restaurant's in the shadow of City Hall here at sixteen Martin Street. It's been there for five years, going on six. The request they make of the council, and obviously subject to the approval subsequently of the local licensing board, is wish to serve a beer and wine. I anticipate the council, Cahill, they brought a menu in case it's interested. Obviously, they serve Mexican food. Uh, Mexican food, uh, often compatible with a bowl of beer or glass of wine. I believe the council would act favorably. It seems to me that it's kind of a larger pattern which the council should take some credit for, which is the restoration and renovation of the auditorium. I think the next act coming to the Lynn Auditorium is a Latin performer. And, uh, through the past year, there have been, uh, Latin performers in our staff at the auditorium. We encourage people to come to Lynn, dine and take part in the activities at the auditorium. As I say, I think this fits into the overall plan to develop the downtown area as a friendly and welcoming place. Be glad to answer any questions of any member here.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Close the public hearing. For all those in favor, excuse me, open the public hearing. Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Council Creighton. Mr. President, motion to approve.
Creighton.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. Uh, next petition is petition to Arturo Gerros Realty Trust for food establishment of roast beef and sub sandwiches at fifty Boston Avenue, unit five hours of operation, eleven AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Saturday.
Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak in favor?
Attorney General Mylos, uh, friend of the street. This is the president. Let me, this is to the delight, fifty Boston Avenue, unit five, is a food service establishment. This is the former site of the Fall Wall Bank of West Bay Box. They're fixed to the Cannon Bridge. That is, we have hours of operation, eleven o'clock in the morning to eleven o'clock in the evening. Service of, uh, sandwiches, pizza, et cetera, at the location. If there's any question, we have a answer. Uh, that's the section of the white council and we'll be providing, uh, downstairs centering, uh, human representation location. Has a large, uh, wide area of, uh, access to happen. And this is for our reviews.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Council Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I've had quite a few talks with Attorney General Mylos. Um, we've worked out, um, all the things I, we mentioned about the dumpster. That was my biggest thing. And make sure that it's dumped every week. Um, the hours are fine and, um, I think that it'll be a nice, uh, nice addition to that mall right there. Have another, um, nice pizza roast beef place, so. I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill. Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci. Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Uh, we have several to set down for public hearing. Why don't we bring them all together?
Yes. If anybody wants to take any individually, please let us know and we'll vote on separately. Otherwise, we'll take off lightly. Madam Clark?
Petition to Tony's Pub and Grill, one ninety-six Franklin Street, Otavia Bolines, for permission for assigned permit. Petition to National Grid, Jason Dwyer, permission to install approximately ten feet of two to four inch PVC conduit to property line of two nineteen, two twenty-nine Lewis Street. Petition of Autocore Scott Finley for permission for fuel storage with landable license at one seventy-two, one seventy-six Boston Street. Petition of Autocore Ferrari Landscaping, Scott Finley for permission for a contractor's storage, app and landscaping, or delivery dispatch business at one seventy-two, one seventy-six Boston Street. Petition to two twenty-three, two twenty-seven Union Street Realty Trust, Omar Guerrero for permission to construct a six-unit apartment house with two retail stores on the floor at two twenty-three, two twenty-seven Union Street. Petition to Enzo's Pizzeria, Italian Specialties, Buenos and Murphy for permission for a pizzeria takeout only at one twenty-nine Oxford Street. And petition to Tony Tipico Inc., Osvaldo S. Salsito for permission for assigned permit at two sixty-eight, two seventy-two Essex Street.
Set it down.
Motion made. Uh, to set it down for public hearing. Please, please, second. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Uh, Ways and Means Committee, we have one order. They requested an emergency order that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the No Shaw Sheen Public Health Services Program communities for the sharing of public health services.
Uh, Councilor Lozey.
Mr. President, that was a unanimous vote from the committee and, uh, there was an emergency attached to it as well.
Motion approved. Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. On the emergency.
Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill. Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. Pleasance Committee.
As the mayor, the committee, Mr. President, now motion will shut.
All those in favor?
Public Property Committee.
All those in favor, opposed. Mr. Barry.
Public Property, there was no action. Uh, Finance Committee, there's several audits. Um, I can read them all together and they requested, um, emergencies on all of them. Order that the city control of the end is hereby authorized to take the following actions. Transfer the sum of one hundred seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy-four from the reserve fund to the various accounts to fund collective bargaining agreements for local two sixty-one and all to thirty-one forty-seven for fiscal year thirteen. Certifies an available fund the amount of five million four hundred thirty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city land by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And these funds are to be used for the replacement of the roof at Lynn Vocational and Technical Institute and the windows of the Bree Middle School. Certifies an available fund the amount of twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city land by a house by the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. These funds are designated via the fiscal year eleven EMPG grant, grant period is two seventeen, twelve to six thirty thirteen. Certifies an available fund the amount of two hundred and thirty one thousand and zero cents as allotted to the city land by the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency. These funds are to be used in the improvement of the Lynn Auditorium, most specifically the installation of aid conditioning grant period is eleven, two, twelve to five thirty one thirteen. Transfer the sum of five thousand dollars and zero cents from the reserve account to the treasurer's payroll account for funding part-time clerical position in the treasurer's office for a major fiscal year thirteen. Transfer the sum of twenty five thousand and zero cents from the account of the ward of legal settlements, see count of I S D building supply and maintenance. Funds received from legal settlement and sale of power plant to be used for energy efficient projects in the eight one of Brickhead School. And transfer the sum of forty thousand dollars and zero cents from the reserve account to the auto apartment expense account to increase legal expense line in order to satisfy all pending litigation for fiscal year thirteen.
Motion approved. Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano. Absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
Any other emergency? Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. We have new business. Two council orders.
New business, could you read the, uh?
Do you want to go together?
Yes.
Okay. This is two orders under new business. Order that a run of the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the project funding agreement with the Massachusetts School Building Association for repairs to the Bree Middle School and the Lynn Vocational and Technical Institute. The second order is ordered that the city of Lynn will appropriate the sum of seven million three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the purpose of paying costs for the designing construction of the roof replacement at the Lynn Vocational Technical Institute and for the designing construction of the replacement of windows at the Bree Middle School located at eighty Neptune Boulevard and ninety of Calhoun Way, respectively, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, which propose repair projects or materially extend the useful life of schools and preserve assets that otherwise incapable of supporting the required educational programs and for which the city of Lynn may be eligible for a grant from the MSBA set amounts to be expended under the direction of the school building committee. The city of Lynn acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitled and discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any cost the city of Lynn incurs in excessive many grants approved or received by, uh, from the MSBA should be sole responsibility of the city of Lynn and the amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the city of Lynn and the MSBA.
Motion approved. Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council.
If there's, unless anybody wants to take one individual. Roll call, please.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill. Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. And they have requested emergency.
Uh, motion on the emergency, roll call, please.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill. Yes. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Any new business? Council Seer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I take up table. You had minutes for guidance for the locations of where they put marijuana, but, uh, spots in the city.
Medical marijuana zoning ordinance.
Zoning.
Uh, to remove from the table. Motion made. Seconded. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes. Council Cahill.
No.
No. Council Capano, absent. Council Calucci. Yes. Council Creighton.
No.
No. Council Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes. Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Council Neff.
Yes.
Yes. Council Falen.
Yes.
Yes. Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Seer.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this ordinance has full support of the Lynn Police Department. The chief is one hundred percent behind it. I know some people are afraid of infringing on people's constitutional rights, but, uh, I know I don't want it in my backyard. I don't want it next to one of my schools. In my lawn, which was some of the other councils feel the same way. Uh, the way that the law is written, I know that, um, people want to wait to see how it's treated, but I think that's the mechanic for the hospital. I, I think we should vote on this. Other communities, other cities and towns are doing this. And I don't want Lynn to be behind the eight wall. So I make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion made. Right here, second. Second discussion. Council Creighton.
Mr. President, through you to the members. Again, I agree with the number of points from, from Councilor Seer. I do again, don't see any harm in waiting every time the community does adopt such strict regulations about something that hasn't even had the state's full opinion and full regulation established. Criticism is, has been widespread, I mean, whether we're talking about the Boston Globe coming out, other state officials. It's, it seems there's no need to rush because these will not be approved until the state comes up with regulations. So, I think we're putting the force before the card, the cap before the blade, uh, by doing our local regulation before the state has done there, so. Um, like, again, I'm against moving forward with this, not because I want these dispensaries in the city, but rather, let's see what the state does. Um, and if it was, then we can adjust ours to fit the state's needs. Okay?
Councilor Calucci.
I think the chief, uh, comments that, uh, the first year, they can put as many that they want in the city. They have like a, that's third of, uh, G M, right? So that could be a problem. If it's an ordinance, we do, uh, we can change it. Everything, everything can be changed. Not that, I always say, the only thing written is law is a technical error. So we do this one and then make sure they don't put it again. This is something that, you know, leave, we can change it.
Thank you. Council Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a question for Attorney General Italian. Attorney General Italian, if we don't approve this ordinance, can they, somebody come in tomorrow? Can they go over it and put it in?
No, I think Council Creighton makes a point that it's still to be reviewed by the, uh, by the legislation. But the, the law was passed to make it effective at the first of the year, but the state is not at that stage right now, so. Uh, there's still work to be done on, on, at the state level, which would be full, but, uh.
Maybe we should might to be proactive and just set this ordinance down now to solve it, doesn't it?
That's, that's really the council's jurisdiction. That's, that's not a legal question. That's what we got.
I agree with Attorney Seer. We have twenty-six schools in the city. How many playgrounds? I just think that. Hold on. I just think that we need to nip this in the bud right now. I just think we need to approve this ordinance. And we're worried about what the state says later. It's, uh, having it looks, so if something comes, we're protected. And, you know, it's something that we don't have to be frightened about later on. That is, it's already there. It's in place.
Council Calucci.
What if they came and they want to open up this dispensary and say that, uh, that? Should we smarten or ask for, uh, that, now with the state for legal?
I think the position would be at this stage that the, uh, determinations have not been made by the state to the regulations. So, so if someone were to come before the city now, maybe premature, uh, because we're not ready to act, because the state is not ready to act. I, I know I spoke with, uh, Representative Walsh's office not that long ago, and I know there's a timeline where the legislature would be acting to implement some of these rules and regulations. But, uh, it would be sort of premature for anyone in the community right now to have any action taken by the city.
Council Seer.
I think while the state legislature is debating this and trying to figure out, um, how to put this down in law and everything, I know that was pretty vague, you know, to the voters out there. I don't think, uh, they would have gone along with this, because I think the majority of people who vote for it will vote because they will, they have a loved one, someone would probably pass away from cancer, as I have. And I have someone in my family right now that are close to me going through that. So I understand that marijuana can help, but as the police chief said in the past, that people can get this for athletes, but, because they're nervous, or whatever the reason may be. And by us voting to restrict the areas that they can put these, I think it sends a message to the legislature so that they understand how concerned we are, how concerned our police department is now. You know, I mean, I understand about infringing on people's rights, the constitutional rights. But, you know, you get twenty-seven schools in a city the size of Lynn, with the amount of people that we have, we gotta, you know, we gotta watch out for, for the, uh, health and the safety of every single person in the state. I understand where some of the councils are coming from, that they're opposed to this. Um, but I think by asking for this, it sends a definite message to the legislature that, you know, we want, uh, to really take a look at this and define how that law is written.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the council of Warthwaite, I think we're all, I think we agree on the same thing. We don't want illicit drugs to be put in the hands of people who shouldn't have. I think we all agree on that. I'm not so sure that authors of the ballot initiative fought the same way. And I think we both want the same thing. We want to make sure that, you know, kids don't get it, that it's not everywhere in the city. And the last time I spoke about it, it's because of the, as we pointed out, the vagueness of, of that bill, um, and how it was written. That actually, and I'll say it again, that I think by preventing treatments that are needed today before the Department of Public Health has even promulgated any regulations. And by the way, they, they'd be the ones awarding the licenses, so it's not like someone showed up and then said, uh, uh, here. They have to go to the Department of Public Health and there'll be regulations that Department of Public Health, they never cite anything. is like, they never cite anything yet. But I think by preventing them right away, uh, when those regulations do come out, because of this hardship license, this hardship cultivation license, that allows you to basically grow marijuana in your apartment, uh, in your house, uh, so long as you can, uh, pass a very low bar test of, you know, financial hardship, or more importantly, that you don't have access to a treatment. And I think that's what I'm most nervous about, uh, if Lynn, if Lynn shuts it down on May first, regulations must probably begin, if we've already acted where we said we can basically make it possible to implement treatments, uh, on that day, well, everyone can start applying for hardship licenses, cultivation licenses, and we actually probably have more people growing marijuana in the city by right than we would if we had taken a slower approach and seen what the legislature does, seeing what the Department of Public Health, so I think we want the same thing, um, I just actually think it's more dangerous to put something on the post now where it takes some time to be act, and at that point, Genie might be out of the model, and people might be growing everywhere, and it takes thousands of kilowatts to grow marijuana, and we have old, we're getting wooden homes from certain century, uh, insufficient electrical systems throughout the city, it's actually more of a danger to have it proliferate throughout the community. We're on the same page, I, I'm not standing on my soapbox about civil liberties, I'm, I'm standing more on the fact that this may be, this treatment centers may be a red hand, is what I'm saying, and that the real goal of this is to have it everywhere, all the time, in every household, which I think is more of a quality issue for areas of resource. We're on the same page, I just, I would suggest that maybe we just take a little slower approach, you know, if things return in the end of the month, and we don't know. And everyone else suggests that maybe we'll be for, the counsel of our three, it's a extraordinary important issue, and we probably should be to have a full strength of counsel.
I, I do want to, uh, just bring up one point of information to make sure everybody is aware of this. Uh, the ordinance is, uh, to restrict medical marijuana dispensaries only. It does nothing to invalidate, uh, the vote of people, it just limits them in the city of Lynn. Uh, the law as written would allow five in Essex County. Uh, right now, I think we've referred to the legislature, but I believe that, and maybe Counselor Cahill can, uh, inform or educate me, we're waiting for a Department of, uh, Public Health regulations to be promulgated. Uh, from a, uh, the, the question, I'm just, you know, people can obviously vote where they want, would be, do you wait for regulations to be implemented, uh, which could be next week, next month, next year, and then act, which may be something that you favor, don't favor, or do you put something in place prior to regulations which you could subsequently change? But the point I'm trying to make is, uh, just from an informational standpoint, uh, this is not to, uh, say that the will of the voters, that we're invalidating the will of the voters. Questions, Counsel Palucci.
Mr. President, if you go back to the year, before those other ballot, no one died of lack of marijuana. People that needed marijuana medication, they could get it. I think we just, once again, if we put the law into, if we can change it, we can change it, if not written in stone, if it's not settled out, we can change it. The world isn't going to end if we put this law on the books, it could be changed, if we need to.
Okay, the only thing I'm going to ask, is everybody knows I allow everybody to speak as much as they want, if you've spoken before, I'm just going to ask you not to be repetitious, repeat the same thing, just ask, bring up anything, kind of go right down the aisle, Counsel Crichton.
Mr. President, through you to the members, um, I'd like to agree with something that Counsel Cahill said, not so much on the, the issue of medical marijuana dispensaries, but that we have a colleague, but a work emergency, who I know would want to be a part of this debate, and I don't think waiting two weeks to take this up again before the full council will do any damage, we have plenty of time before the state will make regulations, we have actually a year, but if you want it received sooner, then we can bring it up before the full council. So I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to table, again, if that's allowed.
It is allowed. I should maybe serve second on motion to table. Right. Motion to table, non-debatable, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
No.
No, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano, absent Counsel Palucci.
No.
No, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
No.
No, Counsel Floyd.
No.
No, Counsel Lozey.
No.
No, Counsel Net.
No.
No, Counsel Phelan.
No.
No, Counsel Trahan.
No.
No, motion fails.
All right, there's still an existing motion that's a seconded discussion on the table, Counsel Seer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. At the ordinance, um, committee meeting, with Mr. Crichton, and, um, Police Chief came and spoke, I also know this, um, complete fact, any state with marijuana, um, has been approved by voters to be sought legally. Even though the federal government still does not allow that, um, crime has arisen, there's been all kinds of problems and issues, banks will not take the money from the marijuana, um, dispensaries, credit card companies, won't, um, allow them to use credit cards, so a city like Portland, New York five, are evil, let the dispensary, whatever vehicle that is, that is in, um, it brings danger to the people who live there. These dispensaries are guarded by armed guards, and who knows what the implications are of these armed guards? Right now, you know, we're talking about gun control and all that stuff, which is a completely separate issue, but every law, of course, may agency in any of these states that has legalized marijuana is supposed to, and, and they realize what a mistake it's cost, hasn't brought any more money to the, to those states and communities, what it's done is brought crime. So I, I don't think we can wait, I think we have to send a message now to the legislature that we're opposed to this, and we want them really to look at this and put back, strip regulations, that's all this does, we can always, as Counsel from what was saying, it's just the words, we can always change, doesn't matter what we put down.
Counsel Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel Phil. Um, I totally agree with what Counsel Seer's saying, I say that we just, we send a message, I mean, this is a no-brainer, you have, it's a slap in the face to the police chief and all the police officers, I mean, I talk to them all the time, we're just putting more drugs in the hands of more people, it's just, it's making, you know, the place is hot, you know, it's gotten to get a little better, it's back to remember what our drugs in the city, and now we're going to do this, I say we send a message, that we just should send this, approve this ordinance tonight, that we don't want it in our city, we don't want drugs in our city, and we don't want around our kids, around our schools, and around our playgrounds. I think this ordinance should take place tonight, we need to send a message.
Counsel Floyd.[1550.08]